February 4th, 2025. It's 9:31. We are in the boardroom. If you would kindly rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take roll call for the meeting.
Erickson?
Here.
DeWitt?
Here.
Arnold?
Here.
McIntyre? DeCook?
Here. We do have a call. First of all, first off, is there any agenda deletions or corrections? Seeing none, we'll get right into the consent agenda. Today on our consent agenda, we have items A through H. All items listed under the consent agenda will be enacted by one motion. Meeting minutes to approve, January 21, 2025, board meeting. January 21, 2025, work session. January 28, 2025, budget work session. January 29, 2025, budget work session. B, approve payroll removal. Mary Claire Eicholtz, zoning intern, effective January 17, 2025. Thank you, Mary, for your work. C, approve six-month increase. Steve Streb, maintenance technician, retroactive, July 22, 2024. D, approve six-month increase. Matthew Drish, operations assistant, secondary roads, effective February 13, 2025. E, approve new hire, Colton Fernal. Equipment operator one, secondary roads, effective February 3, 2024. F, approve new hire, Grant Hickson, equipment operator one, secondary roads, effective January 27, 2025. G, approve five-day Class C retail alcohol license for Harker Rat Chumber. H, approve five-day Class C retail alcohol license for Sips in Motion, LLC. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion tied for second, so dealer's choice. Is there any discussion from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre? DeCook?
Aye. Motion carries. Number two, our claims. We have a claims total of $496,997.12. And I do not see any fringes on there. Do we have a motion for the claims figure?
Make a motion to approve the claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye. Motion carries. Number three, consider lease agreement between the city of Carlisle and Warren County with possible action. Good morning, Marty.
Good morning. We discussed this in a work session a few weeks ago. It's just the new, okay, it's just the new lease agreement between the city of Carlisle for the community building and our congregate meal site. Any questions?
Mr. Packet, did y'all get a chance to look at it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, then.
Okay.
Thank you, Marty.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement between the city of Carlisle and Warren County regarding the Carlisle congregate meal site.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any, is there any discussion from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we're moving right along. Number four is a public hearing for consideration of rezoning from land from A1 to RR1 for Paul Horton. At this time, I will make a motion to go into public hearing.
Second that.
Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye. We are in public hearing. Good morning, Lindsay.
Morning. Paul Horton wishes to rezone two five-acre pieces of ground that he's planning to purchase from Randy and Jody Ubank. The land is currently zoned A1, and he would like to go to RR1 for the purpose of building two residences, and that offer is contingent upon that zoning approval. He, both of his children would like to build a home on each of these two five-acre parcels. They did come in front of the zoning commission back on October 14. They do have some land, the land does back up to the Nash Airfield, and so there were some questions at that time. And so motion was by Rooney to table this item and request that the applicant come back with information regarding the runway clear zones and how they would be addressed with the parcels. So I know there was some talk. They had, each group had an attorney involved, and they came back on November 18, and the motion was by Kane to recommend the board of supervisors approval for the zoning change to be granted, subject to the builder-owner and the airport entering into an agreement with a trapezoidal area where no building can occur, and that was seconded, and they all voted in favor of that. So then, on December 17, it came in front of this board of supervisors, and there was a motion to table the discussion regarding this rezoning application as submitted by Paul Horton, and there was two ayes and one nay to that. So they did go back, and what that was, was they were trying to work out an actual aviation, surface and overhead aviation easement agreement. That has since been reached. I have visited with Paul Nichol from the Nash Airfield and Greg Bringers, and they've both said that they're okay and everything is ready to go. I do know that Paul is here today, and I do know that the, there are some neighbors or some people affiliated with Nash Airfield, too, that may want to speak today. We did not have them sign the agreement because that would be contingent upon the rezoning being passed. So that is, I did include that in your packets. I also did want to just give you, there was a five to zero vote to recommend approval with the builder-owner entering into that agreement with an area where no building can occur. Nash Airfield and Ubanks have agreed to this, it's my understanding. If the rezonings approved, the easement agreement would have to be signed and recorded before zoning staff will process the plat of survey for recording, and we recommend approval by the zoning staff.
Thank you very much, Lindsay. Okay, we are in public hearing. Anyone from the public, either here present or online, is able to comment or make their wishes known on this. Just please come up, state your name and your address, and state your, say what you like.
Name is Frank Smith, 15390, 128th Avenue. I'm right next to the airport. But I just want to ask something. Somebody had said there was, that this is the third public meeting. Is that true? Does anybody know? Because I never got any notification other than this one right here.
Yeah, we sent out notifications for each public hearing, and this is the third one.
Well, I don't know where it went, because I didn't get one, and the people here behind me, I don't think did either.
Unfortunately, we have gotten that complaint about, once it leaves our office and we put it in the mail, we don't have control over that, but we have the list of who we send them to, and we've had that happen, too, with the mail service, so I'm not sure how to address that.
Well, I had a whole three-day notice on this. Let's see, what else was there? Oh, is there any pictures or anything? Because, you know, we got all this garbage right here that means absolutely nothing to me.
Yep. So this parcel right here, so this comes, this is the Home and Court subdivision, and then this parcel, sorry, they want to purchase this five-acre piece, and then there's, they want to leave this land in between, so it is A1, and then the piece to the south of that, it's a five-acre piece. They were going to rezone the whole thing, but Randy and Jody don't have any intentions of building anything or doing anything but far in that, so they just split out the two five-acre pieces for, that Paul is interested in. They were just.
Okay, my understanding, now, I've lived out there for four to five years, and I've known Bernie Nash for that whole time, but he always told me that he had 15 acres there, and somebody else that knew he had 30. Do you know how much acreage?
This whole piece that they owned, that they purchased, was 30.
It was 30?
Yeah, right, 29, 29 was some acres.
Maybe he just, maybe he just cropped 15 or something like that, but I just had some concern living right next to the runway.
Yeah.
You know, I didn't want any, any more buildings put up south of me that would have affected.
And that's what this no, that's what this aviation, there can't be any building in that, so it protects that runway, and so the.
See, I've never seen this. I didn't know a thing about this, and I couldn't hear you that well when you were talking about it.
Yeah, yeah. And I have a copy of the aviation room, if you want to see it. But this land all to the north is all zoned RR1, and then it goes clear up to Nevada, and then it goes across 6569, and then back behind the old highway. That's all zoned RR1 as well, so it's all, it's all been zoned RR1 for rural residential development.
We had a, we had a person build north the airport, and he wanted to dig right on the final.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know who talked him out, but he moved it out.
Yeah, yeah, and I know Paul, where Paul's wanting to build this more up in here for the house.
Okay, so this is north, so is this the highway?
This is the highway, yeah.
I guess I would be over somewhere.
What's your?
15290.
No, 128.
Frankie, if you have ground where, like, the north, Carmel Rose is up north.
Yeah.
Yeah, up away.
Okay, well, then I'm not.
Here's, here's the hearing.
Michaela, is there any way you can bring up Beacon to give a little bit better description?
The, sorry, what?
Beacon website, so he can identify his property. It's not the voices in your head.
All right, this is the subdivision. I can hear your first name. Smith, what's your first name?
Right.
Right. It's Frank Smith. Thank you.
Yep.
And if you want to zoom out just a little.
Yep, that word.
This, this is the parcel that they're talking about, and this is your parcel.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And this is where that easement agreement is for normal building.
The easement's actually south of this, because that property line shown on the map is the airport's property.
Yes, south.
The easement's in there.
Yep.
How big is it? The actual dimension, you know, the actual dimension of the easement?
The actual dimension of the easement is?
Looks like it's about 230 feet farther to the south.
Yeah, on, on the west line, it's 150, 154.96, and it's 227 on the east. It goes kind of a angle there.
The rest of that, that 30 is down here, then?
Yep, yep.
You took it on these, you were 58.
I think there were some surprises that came out of that, yes.
I just saw his wife about three days ago, and she said, well, we finally got rid of that 15.
And 30.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You bet. And apologize, too, if you didn't catch a zoning notice. That's unfortunate. Okay, is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak on this?
We do. He is on the waiting list.
Is he? Okay. I assume so. I guess I would like to make sure that the airport, Paul, and everybody else is on board with us, and everybody's happy.
Paul Nichol, president, Nashville, and yeah, we are, at the current time, happy with it. We've been through all this and discussed it, and beat it into the ground and back again, and this is what we came up with, so. So yes, we are in agreement.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye. We are now not in a public hearing. Okay. Discussion from the board? Recommendation from zoning was?
It was five to zero to recommend approval, yeah, once they kind of got everything worked out.
Okay. I will just say, I appreciate all the folks that were involved in this, and, you know, sometimes the process takes a little longer than you might like, but I am glad that it seems like all sides of this have reached an agreement that seems to work and focuses on safety as well as development. So I am in support and in favor of the reason.
Well, it sounds like all parties are in agreement, so I'll make a motion for the rezoning of land from A1 to RR1 for Paul Horton.
Second.
Do you?
And waive second and third, Brian, or not?
Yes. And waive the second, third hearing.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any board discussion?
I'd just like to applaud both sides for working together and really getting a resolution that everybody's happy with, and, yeah, that's, that's the way good neighbors should be. So congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Number five on our agenda today is consider appointing Warren County supervisors as primary and alternate representatives to the Mid-Iowa Planning Alliance, MIPA, with possible action. Who is presenting on that one?
This was one that came up after, the board threw about a year ago to have representation on the board, so I just missed the presentation.
Okay. Do we have a representative who'd like to join the MIPA board and an alternative? Seeing that Crystal's not here.
I'd be happy to. I'm, I'm happy to do it.
All right. Stephanie Erickson is volunteering to be the primary. Do we have an alternative?
I can be an alternate.
Okay.
We have a primary and an alternate. Let's, I'll make a motion to appoint Stephanie Erickson to be the supervisor primary on the MIPA board, and Brian Arnold as the alternate. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye. Motion carries. Number six on today's agenda is consider FBI Criminal Justice Information Services Media Protection Disposal Policy with Possible Action. Good morning, Matt.
Good morning. What you have before you in your packets is, we had a request from our state and federal partners, which includes the state of Iowa, the US Department of Justice, and the FBI to acknowledge their sieges, which stands for Criminal Justice Information System Media Protection and Disposal Policy. To make this as brief as possible, basically what this means is media protection and disposal. If you have a computer, like, say, Michaela's here, and it rolls off of inventory, and it is going to be disposed of, it is our job to sanitize the media, which basically means that we wipe the discs clean, and we destroy them physically, and we make a notation of that, and that takes care of it. So it applies to anything that we touch at the end of its life cycle, anything that comes into our office. We have to do that, and that also includes printers, if they have hard drives. Any questions?
So today, you're just looking for a resolution stating that we will comply with their requested policy?
Yes.
Any questions for our IT director? Is that, just for my benefit, is that sort of what we do currently, or will this be new policy that we're venturing into?
If we were to have a laptop come in, let's say from the county attorney's office, for example, they handle criminal justice information, and if it's in our office, we do follow and exceed these guidelines.
So effectively, it's something we already do.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
I'll make a motion to consider the FBI Criminal Justice Information Services Media Protection Disposal Policy.
Second. Any discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Number seven is consider, consider the following appointments to the condemnation compensation commission with possible action. Here, they have some subsets that they're looking for, and one of which is a licensed real estate salesperson or real estate broker, and Mr. Tanner Lloyd has volunteered for that. The second one is an owner-operator of agricultural property, and Jim Boland has volunteered for that. Those are in your packets. Does that bring our condemnation board up to full force, or are we still one shy?
We're still lacking. I'll have to get the actual number, but we need several in other categories, so.
Okay.
Michaela, what are the other categories? If you know, it's okay. If you don't, I can, you can email them to me.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
I have to look them up, but, so these two categories, and then a reason of occupation is one.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're still looking for a few more members to serve on that board. Okay, and I would encourage you to apply for that if you, if you're at all interested. It is an important board. Okay, today, we've got two. I'll make a motion to approve both Tanner Lloyd and Jim Boland.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, and thank you both for serving. Number eight, consider 2025 bridge postings with possible action. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
These are the results of our bridge inspections that we completed in 2024 with Calhoun and Burns, and it's not a very long list. I could read them off if you'd like, but it's what the old rating is and what is the new rating that it's going to be posted for 2025. And also on the bottom is Bridge P 31610, and I also include any bridges that we repair or replace, that the rating actually goes either to legal or up in rating, and that's, was down on the Clark County line, and it went from three tons to 18 tons after we did the repair. Any questions on these bridges, or?
I don't have any questions. I have a comment. I want to thank the engineers department for the bridges that they get fixed, and when the ratings go up, that's a very good thing for the county. Without bridge dollars, as those ratings come down, that, that creates problems for folks. Like, it's, it's a big deal. So when bridges are able to be replaced, that's a great thing. We do need to abide by those ratings unless there's, you know, a governor exception for, for harvest time or whatever, because the more weight you put on them, the faster they, they break down, so.
Yeah, and a couple of bridges on that list, we are in the process of trying to get certain type of funding that has been coming in. KO801, which is south of the middle school, new bundle package has come out, and we're trying to get that bridge on that. And the high trust on R57L559, we are very close to, on what's called a priority points rating, that the state will hand out money to a cer, just a few bridges in the state. That bridge is very close, and we're hoping to get that funding for that bridge, so. But it's not a long list this year compared to some. That's, we've been working on these things for, you know, 26 years for me, trying to get this, our bridges in line, so.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay. Can you talk about the repairs that were made to P 31610?
Yeah. What had happened, that bridge was dropped down to a three-ton rating, is really close to being closed. You cannot gain access to that bridge from Warren County, but it is on the county line. So there are, like, four homes are on the west side that only had a Level B access out to the west. So it was, for them to be able to keep their garbage service, and to be able to get across this bridge safely, we had to do something for them. So I come up with a plan, discussed it with the Clark County engineer at the time, and shared cost with Clark County, and got the, put in a new substructure under the bridge, and was able to get it up to an 18-ton rating, which will last quite a while at 18 tons. And that should serve, you know, those four homes down there.
Thanks.
So, and it was, it was a cost of a little over $50,000, but well worth it, so.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adopt the 2025 bridge postings?
I'll make a motion to adopt the 2025 bridge postings.
Second. Question from the board. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Number nine is receive and file reports. We have two reports, one from general assistance and one from Veterans Affairs. They are in the packet. If anyone wants to speak on them, that's fine. If not, we can approve and file, or receive and file.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the general assistance and veteran affairs reports.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye. Motion carries. Number 10, supervisors report. Is there anything anyone would like to share?
I'll start out. So this last week, attended the ISAC State Supervisor Convention, which ISAC is the Iowa State Association of Counties. Some of the issues that were brought up were statewide unfunded, underfunded mandates. There's one big one in HF 718 that pertains to mailings. Costs the county about $14,000 every time we send out a notice. They're wanting to see if we can do something that, sign up for a mailing list, or do electronic mailing with that, instead of actually having to send out a mailing to everyone in the county that just goes in the trash 30 seconds after they open it. Again, heard about some changes to, proposed changes to HF 718. Hopefully, work with the counties a little better on that. There was some discussion about HHS and how.
There was some discussion about HHS and how they will be implementing the new HHS regions. I visited with a couple of constituents in my districts, or district, concerning some property issues, hopefully get some resolutions to those here fairly soon. Attended a virtual meeting with Central Iowa Workforce Development on some of the issues they bring to the table, but overall lots of really good things coming to Warren County that I think Warren County can look forward to and be proud of. Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a little bit. We all met last week for budget workshops on Tuesday and Wednesday and I had another meeting at the end of the week with a developer in the city of Indianola regarding voluntary annexation into the city, three hundred acres that are sitting right on the city line. It's a very exciting project that will bring a very large valuation to our county and our city, right here in Indianola and our school district, so looking forward to that coming more public in the next month or so.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead. I also was in attendance at the ISAC meeting that Travis was talking about, I'm not going to rehash all that, but we have, have facilities meeting at 1:30 this afternoon, as well as North Middle River Watershed Meeting is tomorrow, 1 o'clock in Winterset. And then also I'll be attending a meeting with the city of Carlisle on Tiff on the 19th and we have a Herta meeting at the end of the month on 27th.
Thank you, Brian. Attended the budget workshops, attended a conference board meeting, supervisors were at that one too, working on the assessors levy rate. Yesterday, I attended a meeting in the Senate chambers with MPO and some representatives from Norwalk and other legislators on potentially trying to get some things moving. Kayakota met yesterday, I talked with Nathan extensively and look forward to making that next meeting, which is in March. We'll keep plowing through on the budget, we've got a few more of those to do to get our first run-through. We should have a little better handle on, on it and I would just tell you, make sure to keep attending those if you're interested or so inclined, that's, that's where the decision making happens for what our funding levels look like. So if you have items that you're like, this really needs to, it's something of importance to you, make sure to attend those. And we have a couple more after this one, so. That, that'll do it. Number 11 is public input. Any comments today, limited to three minutes. Board's not going to take any action on the comments here today due to the requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so in the future and I will tell you this, we frequently do so. So when someone comes and has an issue that they want to express to us, we're, we're taking notes and that, those issues frequently will come back up in a work session where we can actually work on it. So we can't work on it or fix a problem today, but I am telling you that we do listen, we do hear you and then we frequently do take action at a later time. So if you have any comments, feel free, the floor is yours. Seeing none, I'm going to take my supervisor hat off and give you a public comment. There is a lot of sickness going around Warren County. I've had, I was feeling pretty under the weather last week, still not perfect. I've had three kids miss a little bit of school. Wash hands, be responsible, be adults, because those schools, they are a Petri dish of viruses. So if you have kiddos or grandkids and I'm telling you, wash your hands because it is, it's wild out there. There, there's a school in Pocahontas that's closed today because like twenty-five percent of the people can't, they aren't there. They're, they're closing it down and having teachers disinfect it. It is wild. So do what you can do to help prevent illness because it's not fun and there's like five or six strains of bad out there. I'm not a doctor, but I'm telling you from personal experience, it's not fun, so be healthy if you can. All right, our next meeting is February 18, 2025, that's a few days after Valentine's. For those that have a significant other, don't forget them, that's February 14. We meet on the 18th, that's a 6:00 PM meeting. So when we started this new board of five, we changed something and one of the things that, that we sort of went back and forth is how can we be accessible to you? Sometimes, and I get it, 9:30 in the morning is not conducive to a lot of people who are working. The compromise was how it used to go, which is one morning meeting, one evening meeting. We do encourage you to come and we try to make it as accessible as possible, you can always join online as well, but that is an evening meeting, so if, if you can clear some calendar space and you'd like to attend that, that's 6:00 PM on February 18. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Rule call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you all for your time.